Charles is eyeballing that.
I know. I'm like, can you eat all that?
Thank you.
You have to have the mine away.
Everybody's strawberry cake.
Paul's a lifter.
You keep hiding yours.
You don't have to hide it.
All right, well, we'll jump back in and get going. The time is 12:15 PM. We will begin with A5, discuss the capital improvement program and smart cities. Mr. Bentley.
Before Mark, you guys, I wanted to mention something about CIP. This gets back to kind of benchmarking and how sometimes you miss the obvious, but I just want to point out that the CIP budget for this year is 23 million bucks. That's a lot of money. And Mark's going to present to you a whole lot of, probably the most number of projects that I've ever seen the city involved in across the board in a wide variety of areas. The benchmark piece I want you to focus on is of the 23 million, 80% of that is what I would arguably say is pay as you go. Now, that's going to be non-bond CIP, non-bond utility, stormwater, which is revenues derived from our residents. The rest is going to be the grant money from the feds, but that's not our residents' direct tax dollars. So it's important that 80% of this is pay as you go. It's not, we're not, we didn't issue debt for it. 80% is pay as you go. So I just, I think that's an amazing stat that you're not going to find in other cities.
Mayor, members of the council, Mark Bentley, Director of Public Works. After watching all the previous presentations, I sit there and I look in, I feel like an old comedian, you know, washed up comedian. I'm always in need of new material. So unfortunately, the material's the same. It feels like it every year, deja vu. I mean, here I was, felt like I was here just a year ago. There we go. All right. Public Works CIP program is basically three things, stormwater, streets, and utility. Stormwater includes Rawhide Creek, Cooks Creek, Farmers Branch Creek. Of course, we have the bond program, which this is, we are in the last year of the bond program. And then utilities is water and sanitary sewer infrastructure. Going back over to stormwater CIP, start off with Rawhide Creek Infrastructure Assessment. You know, that was done back in 2020 by Freezing Nichols. They gave us roughly $3 million worth of projects, which we have initiated the first set of projects on that. The first, you know, the study limits went from Webb Chapel to Valley View, 10 projects, $3 million, three-year program. And so right now, you know, '21, '22, we're looking at $900,000 worth of work that we're going to be doing, which currently I have plans getting ready to be on my desk and will be bidding out here soon to do that work. And then projected down the road, we got the library, we've got a study going on the library. That is in the works to remove the cove behind the library. And so then, once we get that study, once we get through that, we get plans, we're looking at doing the construction work. Cooks Creek Channel, that one's ongoing. I'm just throwing it in here because it is something to be aware of. It is, again, we're looking at a lot of three-year projects. You know, we started, we commenced, we got a grant of $3.2 million, federal amounts 2.4, and we're 800K into the project that we have to fund. That has already been funded. That was funded last year through the stormwater, so we've already done our part of that. Now we're working to just get the job, the project finished. Right now, we're looking at timeframe engineering design will be done this year, and then construction will be '22, '23. This slide's getting old. I'll be glad when I don't have to use it anymore. Farmers Branch Creek, hopefully we're at the tail end of everything we've done there. This has been a long haul. It's been going on since 2015 when the study started. So we're marking all the projects off the best we can, get them all done. As you can see the information, the projects for A, which were under construction last year, have been completed. Reach One projects, we're going to be completing this year. It's currently under, they're all under construction. We've got one little site left on Reach One that is being done currently. Reach Two projects, we've got that scheduled to start this year. We had some issues with right of entries and everything else, which we still did not resolve. Therefore, we're going to move forward with the projects that we did get right of entries and take care of those. So that's being, the design's being wrapped up, and hopefully we'll get that under construction this coming summer. Reach Three projects are being in completion. They're on the final site there also. We'll be doing a walkthrough tomorrow, actually, to go through all these projects and just kind of give our final punch list. So hopefully, we're going to wrap that up. We have a new project that was actually brought home by an NPP, which is your participation program. We got to looking at it. It was part of the study. It was a project that ranked 28 in this, out of 29 projects. And it was more costly to do that project, and at that time, the council decided we weren't going to move forward because we could actually buy the homes cheaper than we could actually spend the money and do the work. However, a couple of homes in that area has had some distress in their banks, and so we started looking at it. And so we are going, we did put together another reach. It is going to affect probably five homes and their banks on the creek. And so we're looking at that design now, and that will probably, since the design has just now got underway, this probably will not be constructed until the summer of 2023. So in that area is basically just upstream from the Josie Lane Bridge, before you get the Veronica, kind of in the bend, right past the school, and that's where that project will be. Just kind of give you a status where we are. The 2021 total, we have $1.5 million under construction, which your groups B and D on there is 1.5. 2021, '22 projected, again, is 1.5. Reach Two is 800K, which we're looking at this summer. Reach Four designs 200K. That's already been authorized by the council. We have, still have in there, in our program, NPP for wall repair of 100K per year. We haven't had anybody submit for anything for that this year. And then also, we're looking at dredging Mallon Park again for about $450,000. Yes?
Mark, I just want to ask on that new reach area, Josie Lane East by the school, going towards the school?
Yes, it's, it's, basically, the creek goes due east, then it makes a bend and goes kind of northeast.
Yeah.
And it's right kind of in that bend.
Is it going to, so like Bumpus property?
Bumpus will be one of the properties we will be looking at.
Is there any chance of the far-fetched question, but I'm going to ask it.
Okay.
That the school district would participate in shoring up their bank?
We did not, I have not gone to the school to ask them that question. Now, that may be something we may need to do, but it was not part of what we looked at, the area. Actually, we fall short of this actual school property of the area we're going to look. The problem we get into is the fact that when we start repairing a lot of the, a lot of the creek, we have limitations on the Corps of Engineer permits, the links that we work with. If we get beyond those links, then we have to bring the corps into the project and we have to get a permit from them. That will delay the project dramatically if we have to do that. So we're trying to limit how much we do, and I think right now, we are at those limits. If we bring the school into the project, then it's going to slow everything down.
Okay. Thanks.
All right. Stormwater, kind of give you an overview of what's going on, the budget status, projects, Rawhide Creek, we got $1.1 million. Cooks Creek's already funded. Farmers Branch Creek, we got about another million and a half to do. We have the library cove removal at 250K in Mallon Park. So basically, we're projecting about $3.3 million worth of work that we're going to do. We have roughly 400, I mean, $4 million to deal with, and so we're projecting a CIP balance of about 700K once we're done with all that work. These are just some of the projects that we've done this summer, this past summer. This is just up, the picture on, to your left, is just upstream from the Veronica Bridge. We worked last summer on the opposite side, now we're, we flipped to the other side, and so we're still dealing with, at that stage, we maintain the same type of product, so the banks would look the same. We've been using these blocks versus Gavians wherever, you know, we need to. But that's just upstream. The house, the second, the picture on the right is actually, I forget which address that is, but that's further upstream. Actually, it's just on the east side of the Nordrum.
Okay.
Property. That's the work that's being done there, so. Now, this is at 12330 Veronica. There was a major issue there. What we had in that, that location was in the center of the creek. The creek is wide open upstream from this area, and then all of a sudden, there's a projection of the bank with trees right in the center of the creek. Well, what happened was those trees would constantly catch debris, cause erosion, dramatic erosion on the, on the banks because of redirecting the water. We went out there one year, I think, three times to unclog that area because the trees got so entangled with debris coming downstream. But now, we took out all those trees, we repaired the bank. If you know Mickey Schuler, his property is, is what we connected to on the, on the very far right side, if y'all are familiar where his house is. Anyway, that's just a couple of looks at what's going on. All right. Street program. They have a map that shows what has been done, and in the blue is what we're currently working on. This is our last year of the bond program. Street program, this past year, we completed Valley View from V Street to Nicholson, Eunice, Morning Star, Dennis, Brandywine, Bevan, and Hearthstone. Those are the streets we did for $2.1 million. Now, we're looking at, we have a projected $4.5 million this year. Streets that are currently projected or been, are under construction is Keyport, Stardust, Oxfordshire, Joanna, Portlock, Myra, and Moon River, and any additional streets, if there's any money left over, will come off our priority list. So we're trying to be aggressive and still keep moving hard on the streets. Moving forward, we have implemented a new evaluation system, a matrix, and we've got a book about this thick right now that we need to go through and go ahead and prioritize streets for all our work from this, once we get through the bond, how we're going to approach those streets in, moving forward. So, so that's another end. Basically, all the repairs will be done based on available funds.
Really quickly, of course, since we're on this, can you remind me, what's the longevity of any, of any new streets? Like, how long before you start looking at it for repairs? I know it may depend based on, you know, resurfacing of a street, but if it's like, for example, how long will our West Side streets last before we start putting, you know, putting them on the list for, for maintenance?
Well, the West Side is all concrete. So we, we are looking at probably a 30-year before we actually start having to do something on there. That's what we hope for.
Yeah.
Guaranteeing it, but.
Things change.
That's kind of things, you know, things moves, everything changes, and, but that's the projection for those that we hopefully will not have to touch them for at least a minimum of 2025, but we're hoping to go to 30, so.
No, perfect. Thank you so much. Appreciate that.
Okay. Future street improvements that we're, we're looking at, and this is all funding that we're getting through NetCog, through the COVID-19 infrastructure program, is Valley View, which from Denton Drive to Dennis, which, using the term complete street, I hope y'all understand what complete street. I don't, but anyway, it's a redo. It was a road die, but it's actually a complete street because it improves the transportation for all facets, pedestrians, bicyclists, vehicular, you know. So it handles everybody. The projected cost for that is about $5.6 million. This particular street has been moved, it was for 2024, but it got moved out because it didn't meet the qualifications for the previous tip, or whatever the NetCog's program had, because it just didn't, didn't achieve their goals. So they moved it to a '23 to '26 program. So we're anticipating I've turned in, I'd like to do it in '24 still, but I haven't heard back. That's going to have to go into a new approval process through NetCog, and they're working on that right now. Denton Drive, from the South Sea Limits to Rossford, another, improving it for pedestrian and bicycle access, another complete street project, $2.3 million. Its funding is still in place. Our portion of that is about $500,000. The construction timeframe is still 2024, and that is moving forward. Now, with the new development going on in the station area, you know, the alignments have changed, and we're working through all that and try to come up with all the, all the new plans and everything to move forward. City participation is right now projected about $2.5 million for both of these projects. I think that number's going to go up a little bit, just because we've kind of extended Valley View a little bit further than what the original project was to get it to a signal, but, you know, you may be up $3 million, so. Utility improvements, again, shows you what we've done, where we're going. The blue and the pink are the areas that we're going to be doing this, we're currently doing or going to be doing. Utility replacement improvement, 2020 to 2021, we have projected a $3.1 million. And we did some CDB, CDBG projects, we did some waterline repl, rehab. And then we also had the design done on our, one of our lift stations in front of the Sheridan. If you didn't know, there is a lift station right in front of the Sheridan Hotel, but you don't see it because it's underground, and unfortunately, we're going to have to bring that above ground because it is a hazard for our employees because water gets in there and there's power and electric and water standing down in a hole is not very conducive to human beings, so. Anyway, so we're having to bring that above ground, to bring all the electrical above ground, so that we're, we're working on that design right now. For '21, '22, to my surprise, we had $6.5 million. Once we got all the numbers put together and confirmed that with finance, I really fell out of my chair that we really had that much money to deal with, but I guarantee you, by the end of this year, we only have 300,000 left. We are now, we've got two sets of waterline improvements, A and B, that are already on the boards to be put out. A is just about complete. We should be bidding that by here in another month. B will be follow-up shortly. We added another sanitary sewer, which I'll, to the project also, I was putting sewer in I and I, but I'm throwing it into here, and that's a new one we just came up with, which we just got about a million dollars worth of new sewer lines that you will see on the February 15 council agenda for approval. FBOB, lift station rehab, the actual construction, we are holding off a million dollars for that. We've been moving that from year to year until we finally get there, and hopefully, we're going to get there this year, may not, but we're going to try it. So hopefully, by the end of this fiscal year, you won't see that six, six and a half million dollars anymore. Inflow and infiltration reduction, we've been doing a great job on that. We've now got all of our main lines, large trunk sewers relined, which has helped in our I and I, which has also decreased our expense to TRA. $600,000 was the last one. I don't know what this year, we haven't seen that yet, so hopefully, we're going to continue to see that decrease over time, the more we do. We're wrapping up the Rawhide Creek projects, and now we're going to wrap up the Farmers Branch Creek, which is from Veronica to basically I-35 frontage roads. That is the final part on the Farmers Branch Creek rehab. And then we also got approved the 2022 sanitary sewer improvements. That was about a $2.5 million that y'all approved last month, and so that's moving CDB program, I wanted to go over that a little bit, kind of give you an idea. I know there's been some discussion, what can we do, how does it work, that type of thing. What you have there is, there's a map that basically we have to go by that limits the areas that we can actually spend this money, okay? And that's the map you see before you. That map is subject to change once the 2020 census gets evaluated and they come up with where's the new lines going to be based on that. So that will, will change eventually. It is a two-year cycle. We used to do it every year, but the money, the funds we used to get were not enough to do anything, so the county actually changed everybody to a two-year cycle. So that way, we dou, pretty much double what we get, sometimes more. But it is on a two-year cycle. The way they work, it's water, sewer, paving, and parks. Now, we've never used it for parks. I have to verify, you know, we can, I have to verify with them what type of projects they'll accept under a parks, but that's something, you know, we just need to go if that's a direction that the council wants, if they want to do a project in that aspect. The only thing about the way the county works is generally, we submit in the application come in August, and we usually have two weeks to get it done. We have to provide them a cost estimate, a project, get the application on the agenda, and get it approved. I mean, it's quick. So the thing is, is we need to, if there's other projects, we can come up with projects really fast. We always do. But if it's a parks or something, or something, you know, aside from the water sewer and paving, then we need to be aware of that so we can get that in, in process, so we understand what our cost is. So when that August date comes and we're asked for all this information, we've got it and we can move forward. But also with that, they have a very tight window for construction. August, we get it approved, then we have to do the work between February and June. You cannot go beyond June 30th of every year when you have the funds. They have, you have to be 100% complete on June 30th. So you got to look at the length of the projects and what you can do and what you can't do. So everything's a really tight window. It happens very fast, and usually, we're dropping everything to take care of CDBG projects when they come up to make sure we get the funding. But anyway, that is a program that's out there. It is something, if, if the council wants to, you know, come visit with me and we can, anything you want to look at, is it within these boundaries, then we can present that earlier to Dallas County to see if it's acceptable, if it's something that they will approve. So just want to put that up there.
Can we, is there a question about that really quick? Since, so some of that area obviously is in District 1. Quick question. I, you know, once you get that parks verification, I'd love to see that, just because I know we talked about Squire earlier in the conversation. Is there, based on what your knowledge is related to, you know, sewer, paving, and water projects? I know we had a huge bond, so I think paving, I think we're good for a while. As far as sewer and water, are there any projects that trickle up to the top that maybe, we may be able to do a little sooner based on the, the funding that we have right here?
Well, we have, I'd have to look at the, we have a list of 63 projects in, in the city, and it's now at $21 million.
For water sewer?
Water sewer. I don't know how much of that falls within District 1.
Yeah.
We, we've ranked it based on the worst to the.
Exactly.
Best, okay? And we're, we're knocking those off as fast as we can with the funding that we have. I can look and see what's available because immediately when a CDB project comes up, that's what we do, we go to our list. We say, okay, what's on here in District, or in, within these boundaries? The latest one's Hollendale, which actually fell in District 5. So we're doing that water line because that was the next one that we had that needed to be replaced on our priority list. So it just have, most everything generally falls within District 1.
Yeah.
Because that's most of the area that we can actually work in. So, but anyway, that's, that's what I can look at, I can see, I can give you that information, kind of at least give you an idea where, where they rank and where they're located.
Sure. Yeah, and then, and like I said, that, once we get the parks verification, just to figure out, and talking to Michael, maybe something that we had slated, because I think Squire is, is a priority. Yeah, and then for just a point of clarification, we talked about CDBG funds. These are county funds that are allocated to the cities.
These are federal funds.
Well, they're federal funds.
They're federal funds given to the county to distribute.
Community development block grants. Because I know we've talked about our own potential CDBG funding, but which we're not eligible for, so just wanted a point of context for those that are listening. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. I'm kind of getting out of my area. You know, when you start talking smart, then I'm just kind of like, I kind of go dumb, but. Smart City Initiative, smart meters. What you see here is a map that shows where we currently are with installation of what you would classify as a smart meter. We basically have roughly about 70% of the city already have smart meters. I don't know if y'all are aware of that, but we've been working on that since 2011, I believe, or even a little bit earlier than that, actually earlier. I think 2007 is when we started. It's been a long time. And what you see, what you see before you is staff, our own workforce, doing this work. We're, we're, actually, every year, we take the budget and we go out and we replace the meters. Our own guys do that. We haven't hired a contractor to do that or anything, but as new developments come in, of course, now, they're required to put in those infrastructures. Like, everything on the West Side, everything you see over there, that was put in when they constructed the site, because that is a requirement now, that everything has to be what you call Itron potted, because Itron is the system we use, and potted just means it's ready for the endpoint to be connected to it and be on the system. So I thought, actually, I was surprised when I saw it as 70% myself, so. Okay. Kind of give you a breakdown of the meters that we have. We have 11,791 total meters. Of that, excuse me. It's a little hot here.
It's cold over there. It's because y'all are under the vent.
Okay, there we go.
Also under the vent.
7,860 meters are fully automated. We have 3,931 to be converted. That's 33% of the system, okay? 2,412 are residential, three-quarter meters, 370 is one inch, some of that's residential. 280 is an inch and a half, 700, two-inch, 169, three to 10. Now, the 169, after, you know, talking with our guys, it's hard for us to verify 100% of that 169, because over that, over the time, we've been converting or rehabbing larger meters, making them Itron-ready, but it was a rehab and a conversion, not a full replacement. We still have to go back and fully replace those because they were older ones that we converted, so we really want newer ones in, in place.
Were those done longer ago?
I'm sorry?
Were those done longer ago?
Those were done probably further back, when they first started the process, and we can only do so many a year because we have a, you know, which I'll show you here in a minute, but, you know, after discussing and getting the total that was left, this is what the system tells us, this is how many is left. Some of those are those rehab ones that are actually operating as Itron, but they really need to be redone. So that number is going to jump around on us a little bit, so. But when we get into fully analyze the whole system and really know what we've got, you know, then, then we'll have a better picture. Okay. The way smart meters work, I'm going to do my best to tell you how they work. Sometimes I'm not sure how they work either, but. All right. They're wireless communications. There are two terms that you're going to hear when you start talking about smart meters. People say AMR, and they say AMI. They are different, but some people think AMR is AMI, but it's really not. The difference between AMR, which is automated meter reading, is that is like a meter that is read once a month, and it's read by a handheld device that you drive by. You know, the, the new electric meters that they've put in a few years ago, you know, the service guys drive by and they can read, those are AMRs, okay? Our system is an AMI, which is advanced meter infrastructure. What that means is we can get a reading wireless, you know, sent to us every hour, 24/7, 365, okay? It's capable to do that. So there's no driving by, it's fully automated, it sends a signal, a repeater picks it up, sends it to another device, and then sends it to the Itron system, and then they give it to us. So that's the difference between AMR, when you hear people talk about AMR and AMI. We are an AMI system, okay? How they work is basically, you have a meter, the meter is not anything, it's a meter, but it has a wire that comes from it that sends its data to an endpoint, which is then attached to the lid of the meter itself. How they work is basically you have a meter, the meter is not anything, it's a meter. But it has a wire that comes from it that sends its data to an endpoint, which is then attached to the lid of the meter itself and it has an antenna. That endpoint has a 20-year battery life. So every 20 years, you're gonna replace it. And in reality, you're gonna replace them sooner. We've already found that out, that we're always sending boxes of them back. They check them out and they send us new ones. So we're always, there, I don't think there's any battery out there that's gonna last 20 years, so. But anyway, that's how the system works. So it's wireless, it automatically sends a signal, it's picked up through the Itron software and everything, then it's converted, sent to us and we get a number. So our guys can actually go in and look at each home and know, okay, based on every hour, where, what usage is going on, okay? The benefits to customers, if we, once we move to allowing the customers to have that control, which they don't right now, the benefits of that is they can actually track their water usage, okay? They can see what they're using. And actually, I wish a lot of them would see what they use because a lot of people don't understand how much a sprinkler system really uses. You know, we can go in and say, four o'clock in the morning, you just use 4,000 gallons of water. And they go, how? Do you have a sprinkler system? Yes. Go see what time your sprinkler system goes off and you'll realize this is what's happening. And they just don't understand that. And, and so with that, you have education on the usage, you know, when you're using it. So, um, now you also have the potential for an alert. Now, I'm not saying it's gonna send you an alert, but it will alert you to a possible leak if you have control and you can actually see. You have this constant flow, a steady flow, you know, always certain times, even when you know you're not even there, you, nothing's running, you can still see, well, that's gonna tell you, hey, you've got a leak in your house, a potential leak. So, you know, it helps the homeowner to understand that. They can actually probably see that if they have control. Also, you get fewer misreads with the system because it's electronically read. Now, electronic, everything, technology is not perfect, it's gonna have errors, but, but having a person look down, try to look at a meter, read the number exactly when it's got mud all over, it's got water, he's trying to, you know, you're gonna have fewer misreads overall. So those are some of the benefits to customers. Some sustainability benefits. The only thing I came up with, somebody else may come up with more, is water conservation. And that is a whole nother conversation that we'll have down the road about water conservation. But that's the only sustainability benefit that I can see. Improved accuracy. Old meters read, you know, the, the accuracy of an old meter is not very good compared to the newer meters. Newer meters, which are more accurate, so you're gonna get better readings and you're not gonna have loss of revenue because the meter's not reading properly. Effects on staffing? Well, basically what happens is you're not gonna lose any staffing because as you move forward into the electronic world and new technology, these readers will become technicians because now they're gonna have to go out and troubleshoot why this meter's not reading. And there's a lot of issues, we still go out a lot of times, we're not getting readings from this and we have to troubleshoot why. And a lot of times it's battery and you have to send it in or something else. Even trees cause problems, you know, during the summer. If you have a big canopy, sometimes you don't get good reading. And so the homeowner's gonna call in, I mean, once they get kind of control, they're gonna call in, they're gonna say, hey, I'm not, you know, I'm not getting any readings. And why, you know, so our guys are gonna have to go out and troubleshoot. So they're gonna be technicians and, and as the city now has grown and the areas open up and we get more of these meters in, they're just gonna convert from readers to technicians. So you're not really gonna be able to change staffing.
I was nodding to all of that. And being defensive as a version of like, yep, 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 all of them, all of them are accurate.
Um, so we'll go, let's look at the way the funding works for the smart meters. Currently, right now, we have an annual hosting and maintenance fee of $25,000. We have to pay that to, for the service to have these meters. That will increase as we add meters. More meters on, that price goes up. So that will increase as, as we move forward. Small, uh, meter replacement, uh, three-quarter to two-inch, our annual budget is $155,000. That's what we spend upgrading the system. That's how we've done it. Now, it's probably been less, it's gotten more, more recent, but that's how we've done the 70% that you see on the ground already, is using the annual budget, using our own staff slowly, just chugging along and getting one by one. Uh, large meter replacement, three inches above, we have a $200,000 annual budget, which we let a $200,000 contract every year for a contractor to go out and replace the big, large meters. Because when we replace large meters, we're actually replacing vaults, valves, everything. It's a whole brand-new enclosure, so, uh, so it does take a little bit. And we don't get very many with $200,000. Meter costs, about $500 for a three-quarter, one-inch. We need, for the three-quarter to one-inch, we got 2,782 meters to be, that needs to be done. That's basically 1.4 million dollars. We got an inch and a half and two-inch are roughly $1,500 each. We got 980 of those to go, roughly a million and a half. So we're, we're looking at roughly about 2.8 million, 2.9 million dollars to do what I would call residential, uh, residential meters. Three inches above, average, we spend about 30,000 per meter. 169 meters, so we're looking at about $5 million. That number is gonna float. That's gonna be an adjustable number because we gotta verify exactly which ones are what. Yes, sir.
And the funding for this comes out of the stormwater fund?
No.
Well, that's part of the discussion.
No, it, it.
This comes out, this is probably from general fund, um, into our, uh, water sewer or sea area.
Non-bond utility fund.
Yes. It's a, it's a transfer from general fund to funded.
Right.
No, this is the, non-bond water utility fund is a transfer from the utility fund to non-bond. There's no general fund in here. But, uh.
We, we have, actually in that 155, we've got a couple of items in there that, there's like three things that go into that 155. And there is one that's out of the general, but the other is a transfer out of utilities, so.
And is the 155K we spend annually on the, on the residential, is that maximize, is that the max amount of meters that we could put out at that number? Per year without straining staff?
Well, to be honest with you, with the way, the way it's been going with the amount of staffing we have with their regular jobs, reading meters and everything else, yes, on the residential side.
My only thoughts were if Joe Citizen wanted to say, here's 500 bucks for my, my own meter, can we credit it off their water bill into the future to reduce that number that comes in?
Let's get down to that last bullet.
Yeah, let's, let's call it, let's call it down. Okay.
But shouldn't these numbers decline somewhat over time as the city is all brought up to, uh, smart meter? Cause this was, or are we always replacing meters every year?
Well, a lot of that has to do, you know, there is a cycle.
Okay.
You know, we've been at it since 2007 already. So we're gonna get into a cycle where we're now gonna have to go back and start replacing the ones we did back in 2007. So it's, it's kind of an always-evolving type situation that we're, we're, we're always gonna be replacing these things. So, yeah, you're gonna get ahead if you do it lump sum. Let's get to accelerated part. Whoops.
Accelerated two-part.
Yeah. Uh, so timeframes, just kind of give you some numbers. Uh, if we're looking at the three-quarters to two-inch, the, what I said, 2.8, 2.9 million dollars, and we're using 155K every year, it's gonna take us 18 years to complete. Okay? It's a simple math to, to get there, unfortunately. Three inches above, again, we're 20 years to complete. So we're roughly 20 years to complete all these meters if we continue to go down the path that we're on. Okay? So, uh, and once we probably get at the end of that path, we're probably gonna have to turn around and just walk back. It's just a do, if you, no four-tran, you're in a do-loop, you know? And you're just gonna continue that cycle. So now we come to accelerated funding. I have, you know.
I can help you with that.
That, that's where I'm gonna turn it over to our city manager.
Okay. And, and, and Shwam and I have had many conversations about this particular bullet. The, I think we would all agree that, that the smart meters is a useful endeavor. The cities around us that have done it, virtually all of them have issued bonds and they did it in like a year or two. We've, we've decided, we've taken a pay-as-you-go approach. And I was shocked when you showed me the map that showed we had 70-plus percent already done. Cause I was thinking, my gosh, it seems like yesterday, but it's been almost as long as I've been at the city that we've been working on it. And we've gone a long way at the 155,000 dollars a year. Uh, but I think we'd all agree that if we could complete the project, especially for residential, that there's a lot of merit to that. Uh, one of the wonderful things about the fact that we have, uh, you know, that, that third, well, not the, the, the large water tower next to fire station number three on our west side.
The painted one?
Yeah, the painted one. We built that way in advance of development. Uh, and so we have great capacity and ability to manage our water supply. That helps us with our cost structure. The fact that we're lining all these sewer lines, uh, that helps make sure that we're not sending stormwater to TRA to treat. So we're doing a great job of managing the cost structure. Our cost structure is right at around 75% fixed, uh, regardless of whether we sell a drop of water or not. And so we're at a point now that all that development on the west side, that's kind of been incremental, uh, dollars right to the bottom line. And so the development we've had, in addition to the fact that we've had a, this is here as a dry year where we sell a lot of water, last year was as well. As you may remember, last year we were able to, at year-end, we were about $3 million above projections and we moved that over to, to Mark's. Uh, you know, you saw previously some of the new, the water and sewer main projections where he had increased funding. That came from 3 million bucks that came from last year to accelerate some of that funding. We're looking like we're on the same road to having another $3 million additional money this year. And so we're projecting that, uh, and we're recommending that, uh, we see the first two, the three-quarter to the two-inch, that's roughly 3 million bucks.
Yeah.
We're, we're saying, the staff is recommending we allocate, is it really does look like we're gonna have another 3 million this year, that we allocate it towards that and get it done in one year.
Do we have staff for it?
Yes, and so we need to hire consultants.
Uh, well, that's where Mr. Bentley had mentioned that we can hire a contractor to do it and I still think we can come in within the 3 million.
I will add something to that. And, and the reason why we have done it with staff is because the process of putting these meters in is cumbersome. There are two serial numbers. There's a serial number for a meter and there's a serial number for the endpoint. They have to match. They do not match, you're gonna have problems. And so what happens is, is to turn that, there's a spreadsheet that we have to fill out to turn over to Itron that we do not feel comfortable giving that to a contractor to do. We know we're gonna have problems and we'll be back out there trying to resolve issues. Now, what's great, and I'll look at my friend in finance, is the new billing system, okay? There's a lot of things that's gonna happen once we get that new billing system that allow us to move a new step forward in the Itron system, okay? And one of that is, yeah. And so what that is, is once that's in place, that gives us a capability to upgrade Itron with some new software that will allow us to use handhelds, okay? That we can go by and, and be able to read those numbers and automatically send those without it being manually inputted and everything else where you're potential having somebody type in the wrong number and you never figure it out, that type of thing. So if we get to that point and we're able to do a handheld, then it makes sense to use a contractor because then our guys can just go back out there behind them and bing, 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 bing.
Tuesday? We have nine months until our new fund, new fiscal year, which is where this money would be allocated.
Uh, well, no, I mean, we could, we could potentially have it this year, it depends.
Yeah, it, it looked like we were coming down within our budget. We projected that water sewer was gonna come down to about 3.2. It's exceeding those expectations right now. So it's highly likely that, um, that 3.2 will be larger by the time we get to the end of the year.
Yeah, so it's.
One thing that's relevant is that we tend to like to keep about 2 million in that fund as a, as a base target. And you shouldn't be rolling the line, but, um, yeah.
Well, my thoughts are, it's not just rush it to rush it, let's get the system going, make sure it all works. Find the people we wanna use, make sure that we're in place and then October 1, 2022.
And we're ready to go.
We have one year and it's wrapped up by September 30, 2023. And I think.
Well, the work that, um.
It's enough time to work it out.
Yeah.
It's better than 18 years. Yes. We're trying to move the decimal, one point.
I see him wiring that.
One point.
He's, one is working it, making sure that he's gonna be able to do all that because that's the beauty of this. It takes out a whole lot of paperwork that we have to do with using that handheld. Once that system is in place, we just go by bing, bing, bing. So our inspector or Alex or one of the meter readers can be right out there with a contractor and as they put them in, boom, 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 you know? Yeah, yeah. Yeah, it's, we, we've had it, it's on our radar, but we couldn't use it until the new billing system was coming. Now, one other item on here I wanna throw in, the $160,000 fee to act to make the customer monitoring. That is a software upgrade to be able to allow customers to do that. Now, the problem with that 160,000 is you pay it whether you put in one or a thousand, doesn't matter. So if we, if we decided, okay, we wanna finish out the, just residential end, okay? Then we just decide we're gonna give all that to the monitoring, which in my opinion, I don't know if too many commercial people are gonna really worry about that too much. It's mainly gonna be residential. Then we pay the 160 to get that, to make it available. Get that software, get it in, get it upgraded. Let's say we have 10 more meters that we didn't do and they come in. And then we wanna do that, it's gonna cost $160,000 to get those additional 10 put there. So when we spend this money, we need to make sure we've got what we want in the system when we spend it. Cause if not, if we do one more meter, they're not gonna have access until we pay another 160 to get them in. It's just the way the system is, unfortunately.
Well, that's not next year.
Well, what happened, what happens, now the way that would work, if, if 22 to 23, we're getting all the meters put in, then as soon as that's done, at the end of that, and we pay the 160, get the software, then people can in 20, at the end of 23, maybe, uh, be able to actually have access to monitor.
So how does that play into? Billingsley on the west side finally comes forward and builds out their three or four other entitled apartment complexes over there that have 500 units apiece that each have their own probably water meter that play into that. I mean, do we have to look at this on an annual basis with each multifamily?
Well, I, I would think.
Comes in, or when do we roll them in, or what does that look like out into the future?
Well, actually, the way the apartment complexes work, the, each person in the apartment will not have this ability to do this. Because the meter that feeds them is one meter, a four-inch, six-inch meter that Billingsley pays on. So there's no way they're gonna, anybody in the apartment complex is gonna be able to look at the monitoring because they don't really have, they're not gonna have that.
They're, they're not built from us directly.
No, they're, they're sub-metered.
Yeah. Well, they sub-metered, but our system will not provide that information on a sub-meter, only on the main meter itself.
No, I mean, on the main meter, they need that because then they read their subs and bill them out, but.
Yeah, but it's gonna come, it's gonna come to one address.
To add them to the system, is it 160?
Well, if they come in and build an apartment complex, we add one AMR or, or AMI meter in there, Itron meter.
Yeah.
Okay, and we've already paid the 160 and we're gonna have to pay 160 again to put them in the system.
I'm just, I'm just trying to figure that piece of it out for the developments that are gonna happen in the future along these corridors and those fees.
So to that point, and I don't know that you could do this because properties haven't been built, planted or anything else, but could you go ahead and put in a master meter right now and just locate it on the property, have that meter? So it's in the system off and then at such point, when they're ready to build, then you've got.
Well, how many 30K meters are we gonna have to put in a front? That's, that's the cost.
Or, or we pass that 160 on to the, the developer as part of their development cost, right?
So that's a lot of money to pass on to develop. I would say you probably group them and then once a year, whatever's come in, then we just have to put that somehow in our budget to pay if we wanna do that. we just have to put that somehow in our budget to pay if we want to do that, you know?
Yeah, I'm just.
You just can't, you don't do them as they come in, one at a time, you do it at once a year.
It's not a problem now, it's a problem after we put in all these meters at the end of.
Then it becomes a problem.
That might be a twenty-three, twenty-four problem, but I think for the people that are still here at that time, like, we need to be cognizant of a plan for that going forward as those rates come due, because I don't think any one apartment's going to go, I have to pay a hundred and sixty for just my water, oh, thank you.
Well, and then the other thing is, is that apartment complex really going to want to know, be able to monitor every drop of water it goes through? I mean, I don't, you know, I mean, they'll still be able to, if they have issues, they won't call in, we'll still be able to see it ourselves, but they will not be able to see it without being part of this.
It's a customer-facing issue.
Yeah.
But that's the only downside. That's, that's the biggest downside to, to not be able to do them all, but, you know, there's always going to be somebody, especially when you're not fully developed, we're almost there, but even as they come in and redevelop, then you're going to have, you know, if they don't already have a meter, it's a Itron meter, and they put one in, then, you know.
Well, my only thought is if we know we're going to add another, let's just say, thousand homes, you know, can you get a thousand meters and scan them and just never connect them?
No.
No.
They, they have to be activated.
Just throw in a box somewhere.
We may have an opportunity to negotiate this too, so that this is.
Yeah.
I, I wouldn't hang too much on this particular piece of this.
It's just one of the things you got to be aware of, but as Charles says, you know, it could be probably negotiated.
So I have a quick question. As, you know, we have these redevelopment of properties all over the city with demo rebuild, and now with the Renaissance programs, as, I'm sure that based on how big the home is, and we've had this, we had this question in the west side with the fee, between a one-inch and a two-inch, how does, you know, how does that work when it comes to the fees? And then also, how does that work, is that what, I guess, the mayor was alluding to, where, you know, each year, we're going to have to look at this to see which, you know, who has to come online to get a bigger meter, or if they already have a one-inch and replace it to a two-inch, are we going to have to, you know, pay that fee again? Because it's the same home, it's just a different size.
Now, the, the fee is not based on the meter size, it's based on the endpoint.
Yeah.
So if you already have an endpoint on there, then it's already set up, it's already on the system. So if some, if a homeowner wants to come in, you just use the same endpoint, connect it to a new meter.
That works, but not, that's not something we have to worry about for.
Not for like.
Redevelopment.
Redevelopment, right.
Okay, gotcha.
Well, unless it's like a commer, you know, you're tearing down a commercial building and you're building an apartment building, then the meters will be different. But, you know, as we retrofit or replace a lot of these large meters, there may be a meter already in place that they might be able to utilize that we've already modified.
Sure. And then for point of clarification, there is a fee, I learned, associated with going from the one-inch to the two-inch, correct?
Well, it's, yeah, it's just, it's just a meter charge.
The meter charge, that goes into the general fund?
No, water service fund.
Water.
Water service fund.
It's just all part of your water bill, it's just a meter charge on the water bill.
Sure, because there's a lot of folks that I know have reached out. Sherelle, thank you so much for, for the information. So just for point of clarification, if, if, for those listening, because I know that was a, a question, and where does it go, and why, and it's just more water, bigger, bigger meter, so, so thank you.
You could lower that fee if you wanted to, and be nice to everybody.
Yeah, we could.
I'm getting ready to buy two of them.
We could, future conversation. Because I was confused as to why, why that was, and so after talking to Sherelle, you know, with, with some of that, it's really a matter of, you know, where do we want the burden to go, and if, if we can afford to reduce that. For some, it may not be that much, but for others, it may be. So that's something that I know residents, a lot of times, the ones that really track that, that's a, that's an issue, right? To your point, is where, what can we do as a city based on how, how well we're doing from an economic development perspective to relieve some of that from our residents, because we all also understand that things are getting really high.
Well, correct me, Sherelle, one inch or smaller, you're not paying a meter fee?
Nothing.
You're just paying for water, sewer, whatever. When you step up to inch and a half, now.
One, um, one inch or above.
One inch.
Okay, above one inch.
Right.
Yep.
One inch and above. Okay, so you changed that.
Yeah.
Because it, one inch, you didn't use to pay fee.
Yeah, you did.
It's been there.
Three-quarters and five, or five-eighths, whatever, which are, that's always been the norm. If you have a larger house, or if you have multi-stories, or if you have a huge irrigation system as part of it, or just want more pressure, then you can, you can have a bigger meter.
Right.
But that, there's a cost associated with that, because your potential to draw more water is exponentially greater, and it, and it increases the cost of the city astronomically. And so we, we prefer everyone to have a three-quarter inch, but frankly.
In most cases, redevelop of a house, home, demo rebuild, the three-quarter stays there, and they use the three-quarter. We don't really replace those meters. Now, there are some builders that come in and request a one-inch service, and that's part of their development cost to put in the one-inch service. But that's, that's their call, not, it's not something we require. Now, on the west side, everything was required to be a one-inch because of the size of the homes, and two stories and everything else, you needed the pressure, and, you know, a three-quarter would not do it.
Yeah, because I got inch and a half coming.
Okay.
It's dead.
Okay. Mark, I had a, I had a different kind of a question. I know this is capital, but more of a technical question on the lift stations, that, you've got some that have to be repaired and things like that. How often is regular maintenance done on those? Is it done quarterly, or just when you recognize a problem?
It's constant, they're constantly looked at and constantly evaluated. Our guys are always in them daily to make sure everything's operating, at least one trip in every day, just to, we got certain staff, that their job, that's their job, is just to manage all the lift stations. And so they go around daily and make sure everything's operating, make sure everything looks right, and then they, you know, leave. So it, it, it's on a daily basis that they're looking at it. Now, actual maintenance may not occur, just depends on what's needed when they find it. It's like we found on the, on the west side, there's a lift station there, and a lot of people are discharging grease and everything down, so we had grease clog up our lift station. We, we had to spend some additional money to break that up and put aerators in there to keep that stirred up, so it would go downstream.
Yeah, we love those things with, talking with Mr. Hahn.
Oh, yeah, it's, it's been a mess.
It's pretty fascinating.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Anything else? Another question? Nope, passed that, passed that. I'm going the wrong way around. Okay, I will turn it over to my friend Kevin.
Kevin Minchow, Fleet Facilities Director. A lot of building projects, which is a great challenge to have. I mean, I'm, I'm excited with all the projects coming up. One of the challenges everybody knows is supply chain. You'll see that kind of highlighted in here and some of the challenges with that. To update you on the, the library project, we're on the home stretch on that one. The fountain work should start in the next week or two, I'm waiting to get that call. Yes. Part of that is the supply chain, we're waiting for all the materials to come in before we start the project, rather than have an open hole and let it get delayed. The staff area in the back, we've been working on the renovation since, I think it was November, and we're, we're completing that. The staff will be moving in first of March. Once we move them from, because currently they're residing in the community hub, we had to move everybody into there along with their furniture. So once we get the staff area done, then we're going to move them out of the community hub, and then finish the work and renovate the community hub, do the final work there. The one thing I did list here, I was kind of remiss in putting in here, the other thing we are doing is down the outside amphitheater, down the bottom down there, we're taking out all the concrete that's there, and we're putting in a pickleball court, which I heard conversations just a little bit ago, in the corner, about how this is a big thing. I've never played it, but it's kind of exciting to put it in down there. I worded the PO, I'm waiting for the, the quote for the removal of the concrete, so the, the hope and goal for all this is to be done sometime in the spring.
For our friends in the back, pickleball.
We need about eight more.
Working on it.
This is one, we're getting there. The other one is the Senlock Support Center. This has been a long project. If you remember back in May of last year, council approved resolutions, there were several of them for the building, the foundation, interior, electrical, and HVAC. You approved the resolutions for that work. We had plans at that time, because we were going through the TCU approval process, because this is on a landfill. We had hopes to start construction like August, September. Shane and the Weaver consultants are helping me navigate through this process. I can get into a lot of details on this, I've learned a lot, I wouldn't want to do Shane's job, trust me. But Charles, just, I think a week and a half ago, Charles, you signed our final submittal to TCU, there's been conversations back and forth. Part of the problem is, is since it's classified as a landfill, there's a lot of things that when we build a building, we have to do, so it adds a lot of cost. And the thing we've been going back on, and this originally was like a, I'm going to call it loosely, a Mustang dumping station for citizens way, way back, and it's the site, the entire site got classified. So where we're building this building is on the southern portion deliberately, one of the reasons was to get it off the main part where the landfill was considered. We had to do borings into the soil, there was some there, nothing really residential, but with TCU, they want to, you know, consider, big landfill versus this, it's all the same. So the discussions we've been having, which our consultant's been helping with, is that the entire time we've had this, we've had methane monitors in our existing building, never had a reading, no positive reading this whole entire time. So part of their thing is, since we're using this for like employee facilities to protect everybody, which we get. So where we're at, long story short, what we submitted is, and they agreed to, because they have precedence, is we're going to be digging underneath this building, we're going to be digging up all the trash, disposing of it, which is the less costly route. And at that point, because of precedent, we're going to classify that section of the property as not landfill. Okay? So we're going, still going to have some methane monitors in there just for our, our purposes, so we're waiting for approval on that. So once we get that, we're ready to go. I am going to have to send those original quotes that council approved back to them, because costs have come up, things have changed, so we're ready to go to get started on that soon. Justice Center. John talked about that earlier. There is a, a police department has a renovation building committee, really proud of everybody there, because we all worked together, learned how they, you know, operate business, you know, do business. A lot of the things I find challenging when working on projects like this, is everybody likes to put in, put up barriers. They like to say, well, you don't have enough money for this, or this. Now more of what's the right solution, you know, to meet the needs? So we, we focused on, excuse me, current and future space needs, PD space functionality, and, and best, best space utilization, because in a lot of buildings, you can see there's a lot of wasted space, so how do you best utilize that? So the, the team, the PD team, really got to the point where they thought outside the box, we have a lot of interior renovations to really help the police department. One of the bigger things on that project is they have that outdoor area in the middle of the building, which we have to engage, on my third point, we have to engage quorum to come up with construction plans, but we're, we're wanting to bring that outdoor area into the facility, where the police department can use it for an additional larger training area, for multi-use areas. So that project's going really well. I think I just got the quote back from quorum, so we're, we're just continuing to move on Rec Center, Phase Two. Second floor is a rendering to the right of what, what it's going to look like upstairs. As far as the quotes, there's like twenty quotes I have out on the street, we've got some of them, the bulk of them are going to be due in a week from Friday. Once we get all those, then we'll be looking at the entire budget. There's going to be two or three that I'm going to have to take the council for approval, because they're broken up in different areas, like, you know, painting, or the flooring, and so forth like this. So I'll be taking those to council soon after that. Once we get all the quotes, one of the first questions, because of the supply chain we're going to be doing with this, is we're going to be reaching out to them, saying, okay, what's the lead time for all your materials? When are you going to guarantee you're going to have everything in stock? And so based on that longest lead time, once we get that, then we're going to set up a plan to when we're, the timeline for the construction, so we can minimize the amount of time we have to close the second floor of the rec center. So and the one thing, if you remember at the rec center, that, that wall tile, where we covered up the brick and everything, that actually, it's really nice, but it came from Italy. And that originally, back when we did this, delayed that project from Phase One a little bit because of that. So that, to me, is going to, probably was going to delay us a little longer once we get it, because we have to try and match it, so. But once we get that, that lead time, we'll set up the timeline for construction, and we'll have them go ahead and order the material. And if they can show proof of, that they got it, we'll go ahead and pay for that, because that's, that's a cash flow issue with them. So that my goal is to have all the materials in stock before we start the project, so that way there's no other ways. Questions, any of those three? We are, we are also, which isn't on here, it's in next year's budget, hasn't been approved yet, but it's part of the, the funding, we are working, Mike and I are working with, John had talked about renderings as far as the branch connection, so the stuff we have, we're going to be presenting to Charles end of this week, first part of next week, that it's really outstanding. So it's a whole different look on it, so. The last item, I'm going to turn this over to mine, because this is kind of like a next year budget item. If you remember with the, when we started the rec center project, we had renderings of everything, so we had a first floor, a second floor, so it was basically three phases. And the pictures here are representation of the exterior. As far as Phase Three, we're going to propose for next year, and hold the mic there.
But, I mean, what a shock, I had no idea this was on here, Kevin surprised me. Anyway, special thanks to Kevin with the work that he's done on this. Being through many construction projects myself, the amount of work that he's taken on to get all of this done is incredible, so thank you for that. Phase Three of the rec center was the exterior, and we talked about this during the whole process early on, and you say, well, why would you do the exterior, business is booming on the inside? There's a study done in two thousand and eleven that talked about the importance of how your exterior looks and should match the interior. Ninety-five percent of the folks that responded said that it does influence their decision or could influence their decision. Sixty-seven percent said that they won't frequent a place that doesn't look great from the outside. So I'm not saying our current rec center looks horrendous, but it doesn't match the inside. And so this look that we're trying to achieve down the lower right-hand corner, I think, really sets it off and does match what we're doing on the inside. Now, what we're going to try and do isn't quite like this, it's like this, but budget-friendly, so. Some of the cladding that you see would be more paint, some of the stuff that we would keep is kind of that wood look tile, the LED lighting, we would look at putting a, a lit sign on the exterior of the building as well. And so I think we can do this for probably half the price of what we originally thought with the scaled-down version. Finally, probably the best reason of all is the library looks so darn fantastic, I'm a little bit jealous, and this would help, this would help us get to that level, so. Anyway, that would be a budget request for next year, you'll see that, but we wanted to just get you familiar with that idea now. Any questions?
I do have one, one really quick one, and it may be the case, it may not, but one of the issues that I know I've heard is just if you have meetings on the bottom floor, just the echo from the top floor when you're having that, is there a mechanism here to try and minimize that to some extent?
Kind of, yes, so that's.
Because we have a political group now that's going to be practicing, so I want to make sure that, you know, we're, we're just mindful of some of those things.
Yeah, it is awful. When we do board meetings there, you're trying to have a, a point, David, you know, clank, the, the big weights drop. So the renovation on the upstairs, and it's kind of difficult to see, but we've kind of flipped things a little bit. So if you can kind of envision this side, we're actually installing electrical to put all of our cardio equipment over where that meeting room is, the primary one that we use, so the weights don't hit anymore. It also makes sense, because the middle of the floor transitions there, the weights come to the other side, so it won't be nearly as intrusive as it was in the past. We're also gearing this more towards soft lifters, maybe, female audience perhaps, the Female audience, perhaps the weights will only go up to about thirty-five or forty pounds. But that's what we did downstairs for, was for you, Tracy.
There's some CrossFit women that'll give a bunch of them.
No doubt about that, but.
No, I'm kidding.
Yes, it's not the hundred pound dumbbells that we had in the past. So we did kind of keep that in mind when we did this.
Thank you.
All right. Any more questions for Kevin? You guys should really go ahead. All right, so if there's nothing else on that, I will transition into our parks discussion. And one of the items of interest is the John F. Burke Nature Preserve. So this is very exciting because this predates many of your time on council and some of you, you may have thought, I'd never see the day, but the day is here. So we'll give you a quick update for those that aren't fully familiar with the project and those that are. Anyways, I wanted to talk about kind of the master plan for this. This area highlighted down at the lower portion here is the portion we own as a city. So this is split up into thirds, as you well know. This is the portion we're focusing to work on because that's what we can work on. We'll go through some various slides here, I'll give you a high level overview real quick. The right side, that's the existing pond, as well as the Trinity River right there. We're going to try and make special use of that as we go through. Overview, we're hitting on the entry point and the arrival. That's not the best entry point underneath the freeway, but we are going to do a few things to try and spruce that up a little bit. The trails that'll go through, there's also a pond boardwalk area that we're working on, an amphitheater and classroom that I'll talk about in just a moment, a wildlife viewing area, and a river overlook, which is kind of the coup de grace of the whole thing. So your entry arrival here, we're going to put a, well, the trailhead starts there. We're going to put wayfinding signage in a trail connection to the pond. A lot of what you see there is soft surface, which is why we've had it closed for so long during weather events because it just gets flooded out. It's a muddy mess. It's awful if you try and walk two weeks after a storm. I mean, it's terrible. So we're going to do a hard surface here. This would be a concrete pathway. It goes to 12 feet wide as you kind of go in the entryway. There'll be an interpretive rest point here that you see overlooking the meadow. One of the things we want to do with that meadow is make use of that and give people reason to look at the meadow, not just tall grass and say, ooh, ah, never seen that before. One thing we talked about is bluebonnets. I've seen people stop traffic and kill people trying to get into medium where there's bluebonnets. So we talked about probably seeding this area, allowing this to be a photo opportunity and then promoting that a little bit more. And you can have some seeding there as you, you look at that. Here is the entry point. This is probably the biggest hurdle for us because, again, it's not super aesthetically pleasing underneath a freeway, but as of now, we can't reroute a freeway. So what we're doing is going to put some timber benches in there, some interpretive wayfinding signage, and some decorative wolders to just spruce that up a little bit as you go through. This is kind of an idea of what that will look like with the concrete pedestrian trails. So soft paths, as you see in the upper right, that's what we currently have. There will still be some of those, but we're going to be looking for hard surfaces. This will make it more easily accessible for those that might be mobility impaired or certainly if you come after a rain event, you could still use this without having to get your galoshes on and sludge through the mud and the mud. The pond boardwalk, this is going to be the highlight of the space. And we want to make use of that beautiful pond that's there and the overlook. We're going to put a Trex pathway through there, so it's a wood look material that is highly durable. It's going to stay for decades. We're mindful of the tree canopy giving areas for shade as people go through, through there, and then seeding areas throughout as well. You kind of see a current picture, or actually coming up here, a current picture of what that looks like. That's the existing pond boardwalk. Now, it's nice, it's natural, but it's kind of difficult to see much. And if you sort of walk down there, you get all muddy and it's pretty awful. So what that's going to look like, here's one view. It's that Trex material that has a pond and pathway, will clear away some of the brush and then make use of those beautiful views that you can see right there. Here's another, another point of view from there. And then this is something that's not currently in the construction bid, but it's an amphitheater classroom. We want to make sure that there's a need for this first, so we're going to reach out to the school district, make sure that this is something they want. If it is, our very talented Parks Construction Crew can build this and they will make, make that happen right in that area you see right there. So there's going to be three wildlife viewing rest points. Currently, there's one and you'll see the existing blind. I'll show you what a picture that looks like now, but we're going to do three around the lake so you have a real good view of what that can be. Again, here's just more of a detailed view of what those blinds will look like. You see what the current one looks like at the lower left-hand corner? Pretty nondescript, and if you look, it's pretty muddy and difficult to get to. So we're going to spruce that up. These will be what they will look like. Easier to get to, making better use of the views, and then updating the interpretive signage that's there. Again, just another picture. So the lower part, that's what one of our benches are there. I don't know about you, I don't want to have picnic with what that looks like today. This looks more appealing to me, so. A little bit nicer. And again, the river overlook here, I'll show you what that's going to look like. So this will be accessible. You'll see there's steps, which is one way to get up. There's also going to be a ramp, so anybody in a wheelchair or anybody that wants to come out can make use of that. Again, the Trex material, so that'll hold up for decades. Real beautiful look. This will be decomposed granite, again, kind of curing some of that muddy muck that's out there right now, making it accessible more during the year. And just another picture. And here's the pretty picture. I mean, you're up high, you're overlooking everything. This is a graded material right here. This is going to help when the water swells up, so it doesn't push up the entire surface right there, but you can also kind of look through and see below. So if you're squeamish, maybe don't stand over it. If you're adventurous, give it a shot, right? Just another view. All right, so the details. Construction bids closed yesterday. It's double what we thought. No, I'm kidding. It's actually below budget. Can you believe it in this day and age? Slightly below budget, all three bids. All three of the companies are highly reputable, will go with more likely the lowest bidder, which will save us about $100,000. That'll get us the amphitheater classroom perhaps if we want to do that, or a dedicated restroom if needed out there as well. So we will probably use the full $1.5 million for this project, but coming in within budget. We're looking to move on this as quickly as possible. This has waited way too long and it's a priority for our team. So we'll bring this forward next month to council for approval. Once approved, we'll get started. Fingers crossed we don't have any weather events that will delay us any further, and we expect anticipated completion by the end of this calendar year. So that is all I've got on that. Any questions?
Number one, your first slide, you talked about kind of the entrance way and everything. Do you have any plans to do anything with the parking area? I know we can't move it, you know, it's real awkward and talking about the trails getting muddy and everything, but when you come down there and try to park and it's rained, I mean, I know there was rock or gravel put down a long time ago, but I mean, it's in bad shape.
Yeah, it is.
We need to do something so driving in there is not driving into a mud pit.
Sure. Carrie Phillips, who's our superintendent of parks, that's not in this bid, right? Or is it?
That is not actually in that bid. The actual entrance going in is, but the parking lot is not as of right now. We can.
So the entrance is just the asphalt going down the hill?
Yes, sir.
And at the bottom of that, there's some big, big potholes as well.
Yes, it needs to be addressed. We need to bring in some more rock gravel in there and regrade the parking lot. And that's something to process that I had planned on, having a conversation with Mike about that, because once they start bringing in construction equipment, it's going to get even worse until they get to that area.
Right.
They get done. So yes, we will address it.
The parking lot?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, because, I mean, I think it's obvious, but if we spend, you know, X amount of dollars to make it just state-of-the-art nature center that people who can't, you know, parking in mud, they're not going to go.
We like to kept secrets around here. Yeah, we'll solve that.
That's one reason I like it, but.
Yeah.
And another thing, from your graphic there, are you going to have concrete trail all the way around the lake?
It will wrap all the way around. You don't like that?
Why concrete? Why not different types of gravel or even heavier ballast like they use on railroad right of ways? Because the whole idea, I mean, nature is in the name of the Burke Nature Preserve, and I'm not really in favor of pouring concrete down.
We did look at different kinds of material and we did talk about that too, because do we do, are we departing too much from the nature aspect? Why we settled on this was because it makes it accessible for wheelchairs and everyone to get around that easier. Now, you can make the case, decomposed granite, there's certain surfaces that are still technically ADA accessible and you can get around. It's just a pain in the neck to do, right? So we settled on this just to make it easier for everybody, but, you know, that's kind of where we're at with that. It was kind of dicey going one way or the other. I can see the argument either way.
Can they stamp the concrete to just make it look like wood?
We just need a little more money for that, probably.
And I will say to that point that, you know, as some, as, you know, my husband and I run through this, would run through this all the time. And also, I think some of the levels, even if it was like gravel because of the flooding that's there, that, you know, would still have us be unable to access some of those areas. And so I agree with you. I think some areas even have two, but I think that'd make it really expensive to where they have the concrete and then next to it, they have kind of gravel for like runners or those types of things. But I will tell you from experience that it floods pretty bad here.
I know.
Yeah, well, you probably know that too, because I know that you bike around. So anyhow, but I did have a couple of questions. You know, one, I just asked the mayor, this is coming from 2017 bond funds. Have we, and so I know there are, they're allocated, but, you know, in talking to Commissioner Garcia, I know the county sometimes have, has funds for nature preservation and those types of things through their CDBG funds. Is this something that maybe we could explore with our commissioner potentially?
Sure. And yeah, we can absolutely look at adding to this.
Sure. To see if we can get that, that, because this, this, I'm really excited about this because it gives me the air of the Audubon Center. So like three years ago, we actually met during our strategy retreat at the Audubon Center, and those classrooms are used so much by DISD. And I'm going to date myself because I'm sure Robert can remember, there was a science center that we used to go to when we were like in elementary school, Sandy Lake Road, that is very similar to this, and it was something that kids looked forward to every year. So I really do think that our school district's going to welcome this, especially now that they're looking for opportunities outside for kids to, you know, be able to have this activity, especially with COVID. And so I really do think we should explore that Audubon Center-like classroom, because I will tell you from experience in Dallas, it's used all of the time by community organizations. I mean, we used it. And then from, from my experience as a child here, going to that center in Carrollton, it's something that kids look forward to every single year. And so I really would love to encourage us to find ways to be able to do that, obviously through grants, so that way we don't have to touch any other funds. But anyways, just wanted to share that. And then I think the, the last thing is, is there, in relation to the, to the trailhead, and I know it's really hard because, you know, it goes under the highway, so you can't really see it, but one of the issues, you know, especially for those, as we're having more and more folks move into the west side, having that walkability, even though it's not a highway, it's still a very fast thoroughfare through there. And I would love to see if there's a way. I don't know if there is one, because like I said, it is a major thoroughfare. The speed is very, very high there. Potentially lowering the speed so it can be a lot safer for pedestrians and our folks on the west side to be able to just walk, especially since we're doing so much around the Arts Trail on the west side already. Just want to explore that potentially because it is, I mean, even when we've tried to cross, even just to take a few pictures, it's really dangerous. So if that can be also a component, as we talk to the consultants, just to see how much that would cost and what solutions they may have for us in this area, because it is, people go so fast, and so I would hate for anything to happen for pedestrians that are trying to walk over from Mercer.
Yeah, we'll look into that and we'll talk to our.
Congressman Williams.
I'm really excited about this project, Mike. I have only one question. Is there any accessibility for manual watercraft? So like kayaks and the standing boards?
There's not on this that we're putting in. It's not to say it can't be part of another phase.
I would strongly encourage it, especially with the amount of work that's being done on the Trinity in order to make that, that all connected. And I know down at Trinity Groves where they have the kayak access points, I mean, that's a huge draw. It's a huge draw. And so I'd hate for us to miss out. We're just a little step above it. I hate for us to miss out on the opportunity to, and that may draw a lot more, if they can, if they can let in up there and then, and then literally float the entire Trinity down to Trinity Groves, I mean, that's, I know that's what Dallas is trying to go towards, so.
I think with Kristol's idea of the kind of Audubon science built into you, parallel space with it to where you can do that. I know there's a really cool spot right outside of Boston where the community built a building, and that's where they ran all their outdoor stuff. And it's, it looks kind of like that Audubon building, but.
Austin has it too, yeah.
So if we, if we are able to maybe look into some CD, CDBG funding.
We'll take a little bit, yeah.
I know, I love that. That one's got to be my favorite, CDBG. If we are able to look into that, I'd really like to see, I'd really like to see the possibility. Because I can't imagine that would be a hugely expensive thing just as an initial little spot that could be expanded later. If maybe.
Great idea. We've actually looked at that, another location, the Mercer Park. And there's some, I guess, structures you can store the kayaks in and you can rent it with a credit card. It doesn't have to be staffed, which is actually perfect, so maybe that's an option over there.
Well, my dream is to be able to let in on my creek in my backyard and float that, clear three farmer's branch, through that little channel.
One day.
And tie it to the Trinity.
We just pick some drops in there for you.
I also wanted to say, Mike, that I like the concept of the overlooks and kind of the observation areas, and that reminds me very much also of the Trinity River Audubon Center. I'm sure you've maybe been down there. And that's been very successful there, and also for the school groups and kids, you know, to come out there and really get close and observe nature that they're not going to see in their backyards. And I think it's, it's got so much potential out there. And particularly the water areas where you can come out, actually over the water, with those observation areas, that should be really good. And also with the Trinity River Audubon Center, you know, they, that building is very forward-looking with LED lighting and sustainable concepts and from, you know, when they originally designed it, and they've actually got prairie grass growing on the roof and all kinds of things like that, which cuts down on the operating cost of the facility and all of these things. It's very educational, and I mean, we could probably get some of those concepts, you know, incorporated in this as it evolves.
Sure.
It blends in really, it blends in really well, yeah.
Hold on, Congressman Williams and then Merritt.
Go ahead, Jack. Thank you for the presentation, Mike. I'm just curious, and Carrie, you may know also, you know, that area is prone to flooding. So my concern is whatever we put in, I'm not worried about the aerial overlook as much as I am, anything at ground level. One, do we have any idea on average how many days a year this area is underwater? That's, I'm just asking, number one. Number two would be, are we confident that the infrastructure that we put in will sustain that kind of harsh treatment over time? So we're not having to come back every two years and tear stuff out and redo it just because it was underwater for six, eight, 10 weeks at a time?
Yeah, that, that area's challenging, and the days it would be closed would be dependent on the year. I think it was two years ago where it was like, I swear.
Six months.
We were going to have to build an ark and sail out of here, right? Yeah, it was crazy. But then we've been a little bit more dry this time of year, so it's tough to say. When we've had just rain after rain after rain, it's just, it's awful. And there's no real curing that. The concrete pathways will help, our crews will have to go out there and clear debris, so certainly it washes up and it clogs things, so there is some staff time involved with that. But I think, you know, the concrete should hold up pretty well with everything, right, Carrie? About as good as you can. Treks will hold up for decades.
Yes. It should. There's, there's no guarantee they can give us forest concrete in subsurface, but they are taking different steps in there when they're putting it in, looking at the plans that there's going to be certain type of peers that they will have in different depths to help with that moving of the concrete shifting. And so, it's the weather.
I understand, I understand.
This is a similar concept. You know, if you've been on the Trinity River, you know, within the Lovey Banks, they've built, there's a concrete, huge concrete trail. And we all know that the Trinity River fills up and floods almost every year. And then, you know, right after the water goes back down, yeah, those concrete trails are a mess, but the city crews come along and wash them off. And they were, they were designed to be able to handle that to some extent, and so they held up for quite some time now.
Yeah, racism and cancel because of it, but it always, it always comes, you know, subsides and the concrete stays.
It's just, I think it's something that we have to be responsible and try to take into account. Uh, and aside from all of this, uh, as you know, I worked with Text Dot before trying to, uh, get guardrails extended and whatnot. Have we had issues with people pulling off and illegally dumping?
It's always an issue, right? I mean, we've had several.
We haven't had it in a while.
Okay. I hadn't heard of it, so.
Yes, we haven't had it in a while. Haven't met you in a while. Um, a few years ago, it's happened all the time. Um, but they were, I know that Text Dot, they were going to put the barriers up on the top right there. Um, but I haven't, I haven't had any reports of anything.
Okay, I'm just curious.
It's been good.
Good. Fortunately.
That's Mayor.
Mike, thanks. Um, I know all the effort that went into this and Charles and Carrie and all the work that you guys have done, uh, in preparing this. One thing I wanted to be reminded of, and perhaps it's already there, on the entrance, uh, way, there was talk of, uh, bus access. Is that part of the entry away? Or perhaps is that already on the ground? And I don't know that.
It, it is down, down below, yeah. We haven't done anything with parking up top yet, as Carrie had mentioned, but yeah, it is down below.
Okay, so it's already on the ground?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
It, it's in the plans to.
To do.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
It's in the plans to do. Perfect. That's where I thought it was going. Okay, great. And then what are the projected costs for the restroom facility? I know it's not in this, but what do we know the ballpark-ish number is?
So that's the $64,000 on question, right?
$64,000? No, no, okay.
Probably a little bit more than that.
Hold on to it.
Because we have to tie into the sewer and that's going to be the big, the big issue. So we've looked at compostable.
Yes.
Uh, toilets, which may be a possibility. It sticks with nature. Uh, it's a little iffy sometimes. Um, and, uh, we've looked at several options. I think we've settled on something that will fall in the $100,000 range.
We're, we are actually looking at, right now, it's a flushable restroom unit, um, that's going in out there. I have a meeting actually tomorrow with the county, uh, out there, and we are looking at doing a septic aerobic system.
Sure.
Um, and if all that goes through well, you're looking just under $100,000.
Yeah. I, I think it's a huge amenity to have for all the purposes that we can all, you know, conjure up. But, you know, the idea of having that is just one more move forward, if you will.
Right, yeah.
And offering such a, you know, opportunity to engage out there.
Yeah. And the beauty of it is, is the low bid is about $110,000 under budget. So that would cover the restrooms. That's what we're looking at right there.
All right. Rick, that's all hit. Thanks again.
So I'm here for a parks discussion. If anybody wants to talk about, you want me to highlight anything, Charles?
Well, this is, this is an opportunity to talk about anything parks. I mean, we've, we've had recently a discussion about signature parks. Uh, Mercer Park is coming up, but at this point, we don't physically own it. So we're kind of waiting a little bit on that. And so I know there's been some talk amongst council about parks stuff in general. And so this is kind of that opportunity to talk about that.
Yeah, so, I know, I, I met with you just to bounce a few of my, my crazy ideas off of someone rational. Um, and, you know, we most recently went through our parks 10-year, 20-year plan, um, and grateful that, that the Parks Board was able to put that together because that was a document that now allows us to go after grants, uh, and get more money, much like we're doing, um, with the Signature Park, um, at Tom Field and Value, much like we're looking at potentially doing to upgrade the barn, um, or even accomplish the barn, uh, at the Historical Park. But when I think about the future of our parks, I know we've put a lot of effort into, into what we're doing. And one of the CBOs is maintaining great public assets. Uh, and if we're going to be a city in the park, we should be the city with the best parks. Um, and that's a standard that I truly believe we need to hold ourselves to. And, you know, one of the big things that we get a lot of questions on, I'm going to go through a few things here and then we can have some discussion on that or add to it, is a, a lot of residents get upset that they can't just play baseball in this town. Uh, we have a park in District Five, uh, J C Park, uh, that is, in my opinion, under, underutilized in terms of, I don't think we're using it for tournaments or anything else, but it is a field that can be used. And I would like to ask council, should we consider just opening that up for free play? Um, you know, we maintain it the best that we can. It is what it is, but it is a place and avenue for residents with kids and, uh, you know, individuals to either gather and play, practice, do some of the things that they feel that they can't do, uh, on a lot of our other fields. And I think that maybe, you know, gives some relief there, especially as the baseball season comes around and people are worried about where can they go, where can they practice? I know when, you know, I still get some people saying, well, you took the, you put the Rose Garden in and we lost a practice field. And it's like, yeah, but what's there now is, in my opinion, a little bit better. Um, and so how do we place some of those things? And that's one thing I want to look at. Uh, grateful for and excited to see the renderings when they come back on the Branch Connection and what we're going to do there. But there's a park that's next door that in my opinion, outside of a few modest improvements to the playground equipment and a widened new concrete trail, has mostly remained the same my entire life in this town. And so I think that's an opportunity to, A, upgrade it. I know we've talked about turf fields in the past. I know the dollars get challengling, challenging, but in my opinion, it's an asset that we can use for 10-plus years. It's an asset that can generate higher revenue. This will never be a cost recovery situation, but I know club teams, if they can practice after rain much quicker, will pay more to have access to some of these fields. I also believe that it's an opportunity during the day to open these fields up to more free play for kids in terms of soccer, football, other things. I know we have Montgomery going. That is a, a step in the right direction, but how do we add another one? Uh, we have, I've heard eight pickleball courts. Um, I do know that two tennis courts with a little bit extra room will get you eight, eight pickleball courts, given that it's right next to the Branch Connection, given it's in the center of the city. Could we add that and make that more of a, a secondary open play kind of sports complex for our community? I know we use Cox as kind of our prized fields for soccer tournaments and other things. But here's an opportunity to say, you can come here, you can play. It's open more year round because it is the turf. You do have pickleball, but can we add some other things and just kind of reimagine that park? Um, I think it'll breathe new life into that portion of town, um, especially as we consider what are we doing with revitalization in a lot of areas? I know that enhancements and improvement like that means something. Community people see that as an asset. They see what's around it. And I think it's going to benefit it in the long term. Uh, going to the Naddatorium, this is a wild one. Um, I haven't really got online to check the utilization stats of it, but I know that in a lot of other communities that I've been to, the indoor Naddatorium pieces have slides and opportunities for kids to swim year round and not just swim laps, um, or sit in the hot tub. Uh, and so my hope is, is there a way that maybe we look at something in terms of renovating the Naddatorium that allows, A, for the open swim, water aerobics to continue, but also provides an avenue for year-round, uh, opportunities for kids to use the outdoor water park, much like they would use an indoor one. I remember three or four years ago, I was in Plano, went to go play a morning pickup game with some friends. As I was walking in, I mean, the pool was absolutely packed in a 35-degree day in December. And I was like, you know, people actually want that opportunity. It's, you know, other things that we can do. I don't know what it would take to, to renovate that building to get it done, but, uh, I do think there's an opportunity to potentially add, uh, make some improvements. And a lot of these things weren't on the plan, but as I think about them, I know it's going to take some planning. We have a comprehensive plan coming up. How does it all meld together? And then I've had recently conversations with the COG, uh, about the Dart Station parking lot. Um, we're looking, and thanks to Jason Claunch, uh, he's going to take some, look into some data that the COG was looking for in terms of retail numbers, other things. Is that an opportunity to put that parking garage below ground, provide public parking for that entire area, uh, and put a deck park on top of that that is better than what we were shown originally? I don't like the idea of having parking on top of that. I'm thinking of something that connects to the Grove that allows for more opportunities, something that's a little bit more linear and kind of gives people a reason to get off the train and be there and be in this area, uh, that will help complement the development we're looking to put in this area. And I think that is a real opportunity. Uh, you know, I think Clyde Warren Park, was it 150 million? Sherrell?
110.
110. I was a little off. Uh, so it just got cheaper. But, you know, a lot of that cost was just building it because of the structure it needed to, to handle that. But what I'm thinking here is, you see how active it is. You see the components that are there. You have a retail piece. You have opportunity for outdoor performances that can supplement with the stage that is so wonderfully built that, you know, how do we add to that area to make that a bigger piece of the station area? I think if we're going to go forward, which we are with the podium development, we're going to lose our ice skating rink pad. And if we don't move it to, uh, Liberty Plaza, do you put it right there in front of the train station so everyone can see it inside this park and plan for that long term? I think there's a lot of opportunity there. And I think that's something we definitely need to consider as we look at the funds that are going to be generated through the TIF. What can we get from the COG? Where can Integral help us in terms of development partners and some of these other things and really make an impact right there? Um, Mercer Park, I know it's something we're all excited about. We need to monitor that one closely. It's coming forward a lot sooner than we think. We do have funds allocated for it, so that will happen sooner. But I also think about our city and our connection points. On 35, which is about to be redone, we share city boundary with Dallas. Dallas enjoys building parks and doing a lot of things. We are the city in the park. Our west side trail will connect to the center of the city through Morgan Parkway and come under there. Currently, Text Dot is using that strip of land for storage of equipment, soils, other things for that project. Uh, I had a conversation with Councilmember Narvez, uh, to just kind of throw out the idea of when Text Dot is done, is there a way to enhance that area so that when people are riding or coming through there, you have kind of a green belt on both sides, something that has more of a park feature, more trees, other things? I'm not looking for a place for people to go play, but is it a place to sit, rest, you know, look different? But how does this look when you're coming in and out of Farmers Branch? Uh, and I think being a city in the park, having a park at our front door and a lot of green space speaks differently. It'll say, you have now left Dallas, um, and you're in another area. But if we could partner with Dallas and, and do something on both sides that can be utilized, I think it, it helps both of our communities. And so a lot of these things I've been thinking about a lot. I've thought about it as that plan came forward, um, you know, because I went through it and I looked at where we're allocating dollars. Uh, and when I think of big projects, I think of parks, I think of things that can hopefully transform our community. Uh, these are kind of the things that I wanted to bounce off of all of you and at least put into your mind about what we have, where can we go, and how can we accomplish a lot of the needs that our residents have been asking for as we plan out the next five, 10, 15 years. So, uh, with that, I'll open it up for discussion and other things that you guys want to talk about parks related, but those are kind of my ideas. And I think with second to last bite at the apple, something I will put out there.
Mayor, just remind, you and I have talked about Squire Park too.
Yes.
So that's.
Yeah, that's the other one.
The master plan for 2027, based on the resident satisfaction survey, I think that's something we need to move up. We've currently in-house loosely designed something that I think is pretty awesome. I have somebody sketching it out right now. Um, splash pad, the whole works. I think it'd be pretty cool.
And there are things that we've talked about, um, you know, in private, of course, about things that we could do there. Um, and thank you for reminding me. That was the last one on my list. I was sitting here like, I don't know. How many more parks can I get? Uh, but it's, uh, you know, that's, that's definitely an opportunity as well. And that speaks to, uh, enhancements and investment in areas that for the longest time haven't, haven't really had those. And so, you know, how do we upgrade a lot of those things so that every community in every neighborhood in Farmers Branch feels that the asset that they have in their own backyard that is hopefully less than a 10-minute walk? I've always loved the 10-minute, 10-minute walk to a park.
Yep.
Uh, how do, you know, how do we make them all feel like, yeah, this, we have great parks in our backyard and it's not, I need to go to that one? We want them to visit them all, but they all need to be different. They all need to have different touch points, uh, different opportunities, uh, and different ways that our community can enjoy, uh, the amenities that we're providing for them. And so a lot to think about, a lot to potentially plan for, but I think a lot of opportunity that we could get the ball rolling on so that future councils and future, you know, people that move here, people that still live here, um, can enjoy these assets even more in the future.
Um, I would like to payback off that. So Squire Park is obviously top of my list. And you, and we've talked about this several times. Um, just with revamping that, you know, we did a really great job with parks like Mallon and things like that. So how can we make this one mimic what we're already doing in other areas? So I'm glad that also we may be eligible potentially with CDBG fund from the county, along with water sewer that I know Mark Bentley was talking about. Um, so look forward to getting more information on that and potentially be able to use that because those funds are allocated for low-income areas, which this area is considered and within the scope. So hopefully we'll get some good news on that. Um, the other thing, I agree with, um, with the mayor on turf. This is something I know we've talked about. We have an FC Dallas facility that is grass and they actually pay and go all the way to Arlington when it rains just to be able to get on turf so they can continue to, to train. I mean, it's an elite group. There's a need for that. And so I think that really looking at the cost efficiency for something like that, because I think we could recuperate our costs based on what some of our, our, our. Well, um, I think we could potentially try to, to incur some cost back on that, um, because I know it is, it is quite, um, expensive. But the other thing too is, one of the things I've heard is community members being able to utilize the amenities that they pay for. And so I know we've had a conversation on that. I continue to talk about that. I'm excited about what we're doing at Montgomery to add those soccer goals, um, and volleyball goals. I think that's great in a facility that is, in a place where it's, um, walkable. You know, similar to what the mayor said, the goal is really to create a park where you don't have to drive to it within every single community. So I think making sure and looking at how our community has grown, especially because, you know, the Farmers Branch that we grew up in is not the same Farmers Branch it is now. We have new, um, younger families moving in with younger kids, and that's what they're looking for. And, and that's why they're moving here. And so how can we make sure that, um, there's that walkability aspect, um, to every single park that we have for regardless of where you are, wherever you put a pin in the map, there's a walkable park. And I know that's, you know, um, I, I know it's, it's, it's tough, but I think we're almost there because we have so many assets already. Um, the biggest thing obviously, and I talk about this, is amenities on the west side. I've been talking about it since I got on council. Um, luckily there, there may be an opportunity. We'll, we'll see how that goes. But the nature preserve is a great, um, first step because it's already there and we're enhancing that. Um, and, and so really excited about the trail. So I just want to thank you and your team for just thinking outside the box with some of these things and also trying to find innovative ways to fund them. Um, because I think that's also really important. And how can we leverage our regional partners to be able to help us make these things happen? So, um, those are just a few things. And, and again, I'll, I'll end with Squire. Huge, huge point of interest for, for, for me and my district and our residents. And so hopefully we'll be able to, to do that something around there with some of the CDBG funds. So that is, I think that is all I have. Yeah, I think that's good. I'm good. Thank you, Mayor.
I think Terry touched on it earlier. Um, and we said maybe there are some homes that if we acquire, do something kind of like Leslie Knope, you know, for a season of Parks and Rec. You know, how do we, how do we turn this little, little area in a neighborhood into a, a park, uh, that completes that, you know, walkability? I know that, what is our, do we have any areas of our city that you cannot access a park within a 10-minute walk?
I can send you the graph that we have.
I mean, where, like.
There's a little area in mine.
I couldn't tell you off the top of my head, but we did do basically a, a map of the city and did a five, 10-minute walk. It sort of, we had a lot of it encompassed to some degree. And I will say that with this caveat, some of those parks are great. It's a small postage stamp, open space, so it's a little, a little bit cheating on that, I guess. But, um, anyway, uh, we do actually, believe it or not, beat a lot of the larger cities you'd think do this well. We beat them on a lot of metrics. We just don't qualify because of our city size.
Yep.
And so when I saw some of that stuff before, I said, there's no way we can be this. And so I started digging into it. And, uh, yeah, we actually do really well. We just, what we're really deficient is just open green space. That, and there's nothing we can do about that. But as far as walkability, the assets that we have, we're doing pretty, pretty good.
And this may not be parks related, but, um, one of the things that I would like to, um, and, because it does have to do with, you know, being outside and whatnot, is really looking at our bike lanes. This is a conversation I've had with a few of our residents. We have a lot actually on the west side that are, that are cyclists, but really extending those bike lanes down, um, all down to, to, through, through, past Luna, but also, um, just looking at other areas where we can either, um, make sure that we have them or also, um, uh, also to, like, I've, I've driven by and some of them need to be repainted and something like that. So I know it's not parks related, but it's still like an out, an amenity of sorts that we offer for our, our, our cyclists and whatnot. So, um, so anyhow, just wanted to throw that out there for future, future items as well.
I've, I've got a question. It's kind of a philosophical question because since I've been here, it's gone one way and it's gone another way. And I, I just, I'm curious. Uh, in terms of, um, you know, we, we spend a lot of money, we have one for parks, we spend a lot of money on park maintenance, uh, and we're talking about spending a lot more money on maintenance. Um, when we look, when I look at programming, when I talk at, talk with Mike about programming, a lot of our programming is for, uh, non-residents. And, uh, and, and so that's, and, and sometimes we, we look to say, okay, are we going to provide this particular activity and this particular programming when 80% of the folks when 80% of the folks that use it are non-residents? And then when we decide we're not going to allow that activity anymore, we get a lot of pushback. And, and so, you know, there are many instances where our fields are used by teams and tournaments that have a direct benefit back to us in terms of utilization of our hotels. And that's, that's, that's all a good thing. You know, we've got, some of our fields are known nationwide as some of the best. And so, but I just want to make sure, you know, are, is council okay with the way we are now? Are we too focused on non-Farmer's Branch residents? Because I, I heard that comment, Chris, I think you made, you know, making sure community members can use what they pay for. And I would argue that I'm not sure we are doing that.
Oh, yeah.
If I looked at the percentage of use of our parks, I'd say the percentage of use of our parks is probably by non-residents, the, the highest percentage. And I just want to make sure that that's philosophically the way council wants to go. Or if you tell me no, then that's going to, I think, redirect the way we're going to have this conversation about existing parks as well as some of these future endeavors. So I, I just, I throw that out there. Because I'm not sure sometimes where, what the philosophy is right now.
But are you talking about public parks or are you talking about ballfields?
All of it. They're all public parks.
Mostly probably the ballfields.
I think we've had, I, I think I've sat here and listened to this conversation for five and a half years now. And as you've heard me say many times, this is quite the philosophical conversation. It's whether you want to have events for residents or you want to, or you view the events that you have as marketing tools to bring others to our city. So, and I'm not saying one way or the other. But I do know many of the residents in the city feel as though they paid for the amenities that we have. Why do they have to pay again to use them? Again, philosophical question, okay? And as we heard, you know, Councilman Baumgartner used to preach, it's expensive to operate these things and the expenses aren't going down. So, you know, is there something that we can do that's going to help offset some of those expenses? And is charging a nominal fee to residents acceptable? We've already made that, councils, councils have already made that decision. Some still don't like it, but that's just the way it is right now. And then do we charge others more? Okay. But I think you have to look first and foremost, we're all residents. And the things that we do for our city, we do for our city residents first. We're not, we're not building big new neon park, signature park for necessarily the benefit of others to come to our city, although others will. They're going to gravitate here organically, for lack of a better term. But I think, you know, when we look at doing things, we have to look to our residents first and are we serving them and doing something that's going to be benefit to them? The event side of things, I still, it's, for me, it's a toss-up. It's a 50/50. We do events for our residents, but we have a lot of non-residents that come. And the res, the, the events that we're putting on, that we put on for free, cost a lot of money. Are we seeing the benefit translate to people spending money in our city? And I guess that would be something to go back and look. Whenever we have a 4th of July event, are we seeing a spike in sales tax? Question. Are we seeing people move here because they said you had great events? Are we, are they moving here because we have great parks? I don't know. You know, it all plays together as one. Many of us tout the story of city services first before anything else. Whereas maybe we should be talking about our parks because that's more readily seen than our police service or a fire service, something like that. So I don't know, everybody's going to have a different answer on that. And that's one of these things that I don't think we're ever going to come to a consensus one way or the other. Because it just, there's so many intangibles that go along with it. I don't know, others may think otherwise, but...
I think there's a balance between the two. I think, I think we've looked at a lot of things that, that helped to generate revenue in the city. And we've talked a lot here lately with Signature Park of how we attract more density into those areas to support our, our restaurant park and to attract more of the finer retail that our residents are wanting to, to have. And so I think that is a payoff for the resident, even if they weren't taking advantage necessarily of that amenity. I do think, I, there's no parks for me to add. I, I think that mayor would, if I added anything else, we just need to bulldoze everything and turn everything into a park. And so I think, I think the, the mayor has some, some really great, some great direction in that. I also would love to see the Nautatorium become more efficiently used besides just laps. I just look at like Great Wolf Lodge and those types of things. That generates a ton of revenue just because parents don't have anything better for their kids to do when it's not nice outside. So I'd love to see, see that as well. I would love to see Montgomery turfed. I think that's a great idea and that allows for more play, more free play more often. You know, as far as this monetizing all of the amenities, I, I, I think y'all all know that I'm not for that. You know, I, I don't want to see, I don't want to see our signature park being monetized. I don't want to see open play parks like JC being monetized. When my son was in T-ball, we used JC as a, as a practice field. That's where we practiced at. And so I don't, I don't understand having a park that's closed for most of the time or that's closed waiting to be rented. And, you know, I think you can still rent out and, and have open play a lot of the time. I know that we, in fact, recently we used the little rink by the middle school because that's where we roller skate. And so, and I love the fact that it's always open and I can turn lights on myself. I think that's a great amenity and like a lot of our residents didn't know that, that there was that opportunity that you could turn lights on there yourself. I don't see why we couldn't do that with JC. I think Squire is fantastic. I, I can't wait to see something with Squire. Sounds like maybe we're going to bump that up and move that along. And so, I mean, I think, I think these, these larger ticket item amenities that we're, that we're centering more towards our businesses, because yes, we should be serving our residents. But, you know, 70% of our, of our city's taxable income is through businesses. So I don't think we need to forget that we need to support those businesses as much as what we're supporting our residents as well. So I think, I think it's, I think it's balanced.
I think it's, yeah, it's definitely balanced too. I mean, that's why I said, you know, Cox, those are our soccer fields that we showcase for soccer tournaments and other things. Same with the softball and baseball fields at Warren Good and especially Pepper Park. But on some level, you know, this might've been an easier conversation years ago when we still had the, the ball field at Sherman, right? And then we still had, you know, when Barney Wood was a football field. Like the times change, things change, sports change. And, you know, you got to be adaptive to be able to accommodate that. I mean, you got to, much like, there was a conversation, scooters were here, scooters were gone. You know, we need to figure out which things are flashing the pan trends, which ones are here to stay and do we need to make adjustments for? But I think we have some fields and some opportunities that can accomplish both and allow us to showcase both. And that's why opening up JC, is there another, you know, baseball field somewhere that we're like, okay? You know, outside of a tournament coming up, mostly open, tournaments coming to town, shut it down a week before, whatever, we need to get it in that pristine condition that most people are used to seeing and expecting Farmers Branch, because I know we have that capability. But, you know, if we were to redo Farmers Branch Park and add those turf fields, you can still keep Cox as our game-ready pristine fields because we can use those in a different capacity more than just that grass that once it rains, it's down for a week because not much is going on there. I mean, it depends on how fast it dries out. But what else? How could we utilize that as more open play space, but also be an additional feature park? You know, kind of like the one we, we talked about in Houston on a smaller scale. But, you know, it has that same feel. And this goes back to, that's not a field that we're charging people for unless they rent it out at night when clubs, teams will pay exorbitantly more than what we're charging them now. And like I said, we've had this philosophical discussion as well. Not every amenity needs to be a payback. Not every amenity needs to break even. But, you know, we do need to make sure that we're sustaining the costs that it takes to run these facilities. And if we want to keep low tax rates and do some of this other stuff, you know, there, there has to be balance in terms of how we, how we do that. So I think we've done a good job in the past walking that fine line. You've done a, you and your team have done a great job finding different ways to raise revenue from outside sources that help support those efforts on our end. But I think finding that balance is available. It is a philosophical thing. And I think it's one that we all just need to commit to and be open with. Because, you know, you look around us, MoneyGram, right? I mean, that's a bunch of turf fields that are constantly being utilized and the upkeep there is, you know, they're paying for themselves. But I think that's, is that, is that the biggest group we compete with in terms of soccer?
Probably.
Close by.
And that's a pretty penny to bring this field.
Yeah.
That's not free fields.
No, it's not free at all.
Hunt Management Corp manages it.
Yeah.
It's a well-oiled machine.
Well, I will offer this too. As Allison knows, you know, select sports are a big business, right? And when we dug into the numbers, depending on the sport, we're roughly 20% or less residents, mostly non-residents, which is why we started increasing fees to rent fields and make those available. I'll tell you why. You want to see a fight like you've never seen before. When they have a rain event, you have a field for use, they'll pay any amount of money to get it, right? So that's why our rental revenue went from 20 some odd thousand to almost 300,000 annually. So it's, yeah, it's, it's sizable difference, so.
Mike, you know, having spent time on the Parks Board, I struggle with this balance of, you know, the philosophical question. But I do think it is a balance that we can strike. And I agree with others that have said, not every amenity has to be cost recovery. There's just some things that we do as a city that, you know, we collectively as a society and a community pay for and contribute to. We are so lucky as Councilwoman Williams stated with our balance of business to residential. So we have, you know, that in our favor as well. But I think looking at these opportunities, if we turfed Farmers Branch Park, we can reimagine it, reconfigure it, maximize the usable space, the practice space. Those days when it rains, I know my kid ends up going to Allen at times with her soccer club or down into Dallas to indoor facilities, indoor facilities, not just outdoor facilities that are turfed. So, and we just played a game with her school team on Monday night when it was raining and we were on a turf field. And so we played in the rain. And, you know, mom and dad are sitting under the umbrella and, you know, watching the game. So that, from a soccer perspective, is a big deal. And when you pay whatever amount, the three to $4,000 or more to be on a club team, you know, moving to Farmers Branch to get, you know, 10, 12 different practice type fields, you can bring those, those club teams. As we know, we have partnered with them in the past. We can bring those. And so therefore, those can be recouped at some level, not necessarily fully, but at some level. But I think having these improvements at different parks across the, the community is important to families that are moving in. And it goes back to the education of what happens and how we have budgeted our funds for replacement of equipment. You guys have got a great schedule for that going on. And sometimes, you know, people just don't understand, you know, they're on year four of waiting till the next year of getting brand new equipment or updated equipment or updated features to their particular park. So we have to do a good job of communicating that. And Carrie and your team and, you know, Charles beforehand, all, doing all the work that you guys do, you know, a lot of it is unseen and on our own books. We don't have to contract that out. So you guys do a fantastic job. You don't get enough credit. And I'll tell you, you know, I've told Charles that and Carrie. We'll have the same sort of relationship going forward, I suspect, fully of all the good work that goes on with your team members out there in the field. But I think it's important that the community knows that we're a city in the park. We have that moniker. We have to maintain our parks and we have to invest in our parks going forward. Love to see the chain link fence go down at a number of these parks and have them more, you know, not necessarily open, but more updated. Let's just put it that way. Those type of things. And I, just bringing it forward. We've done a great job at the, at the rec center. That visibility that you spoke of, it's the attractiveness of that particular field. So I'm supportive of what we're doing. Want to be fiscally responsible as well. Not suggesting that we just open the checkbook. As much as I like you, Mike, I know you can't do that. But we'll, you know, be prudent in our decisions and, and what makes sense going forward.
I think partnerships come into play too, because I was just asking the mayor, you know, Earl Turner plays at Cox. Well, when we played soccer, you would have to go all the way to Standridge. And then there's always a calendar issue because there are also four other high schools that use that team or that use that, that turf. And so there may be even an opportunity to partner with even our school district to say, hey, this is the field that you utilize. And so that's why I, I agree. I think we do need to be fiscal, you know, fiscal stewards of, of our, our taxpayers. But that's where I think those partnerships may be, may be an opportunity too. Something, it's something also to, to think about and over.
Yeah, they, school districts have the, the same conversation. You know, we've all paid for these schools, yet they don't let us run on that track or, or use that soccer field. I mean, the other day I was, what I would call sprinting, others would say maybe jogging or jogging. On the track, I was yanked off of it as well. Like, hey, you took me on here.
Drive up Kelly in the new ballfields that they have.
But, you know, I mean, I understand their position. But it's, it's still, it's a, it's one that we all need to grapple with. But, you know, I think, as, as you've kind of probably heard here, let's, let's find that balance. Let's open some stuff up and see how, see how it takes with some residents. Chris, what do you have, anything? You've been quiet over there. Taking it all in?
Yeah, taking it all in. I think the city does a good job in balancing. And, you know, like has been said, this is a philosophical thing. I can see both sides of it. And so I want to do some more thinking on it. But I think we can do more with our parks that we've got. And I would like to make one comment. I think we've talked before. I'm very much in favor if we can move the Dart parking station underground. I know this is like a longer term deal. And if we could then have some type of a park, just a green space above that, which this will kind of be the future downtown area of Farmers Branch one day as we get the retail and everything else in place. It doesn't have to be a Clyde Warren Park, but I mean, it would kind of be the center there. And when you think we've got the Star Center, we've got the Grove, the Historical Park, where we've got the Bluegrass Festival and other things. I mean, there's, there's a lot of potential there for this to kind of be the nucleus, you know, of that, of that area. And it, it's a waste just to have it as a multi-acre parking spot in the middle of what we want to be a nice area that people will come to.
Anything else from anyone as it relates to parks this time? Because we put a lot out there to think about.
Was Squire a priority for next budget year? Is that what I'm hearing here? Should I work on something?
I think they were kind of indicating everything for next budget year. We can, we can talk.
I think the mayor gave you a list.
Charles is going to be $150 million, but they said.
You know, we, we did it once in 83, 84. All right, we'll talk about it. Yeah. Appreciate it. I would say let's take a 15 minute break to, or 20 minute break to 12:40 or 2:45 and then we'll come back and handle the last two.